Okay, this is excellent information for you parents and students out there who are watching this and listening. You've gotten some really great information here between Dr. Kelly, Dr. Agajafar, trustees Rios, and Flunder about what you need to know and understand about coming here. And so, we want you to pay heed to that.
Dr. Kelly, I had a couple of questions, but I'll see you afterwards. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. That concludes all the people I have presenting. I'd be happy to answer any questions on my report.
I have a question for you tomorrow. I see here one of your bullet points dealing with reverse transfer agreements with Wichita State and Pittsburgh State.
Yeah.
And I believe we already have agreements with K-State.
With K-State, a reverse transfer.
Are there any others that I -- that's one I know of.
Yeah. The reverse transfer, we only have one with, and that's with K-State.
K-State.
The Pittsburgh State one is just about finished. They're going to send us the final copy, and I will submit that to Dr. Givens for her signature. We've got few -- want to see what articulation agreements we have, they're posted on the college website, and you can go in and click, and the reverse transfer is up there with K-State. And once Dr. Givens approves the Pittsburgh State, I put it up on the website as well.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for tomorrow?
Tomorrow, what's up? You said you're working on the education master plan. Can you talk a little bit more about the education master plan, what that's going to be?
Yes. This is a task that Dr. Givens gave me to work on. We've never had an education master plan, and we are in the process of putting one together. And what I've been working with the academic deans, soliciting input from -- basically, we went through the strategic master plan, extrapolated what was in there pertaining to education. In addition, I asked the academic deans to go to their faculty and solicit input. We are putting together a document. In fact, over the weekend, I finished another draft of the document. It's now 15 pages long, and I've given it to the academic deans, and they're going to review it. We're going to meet in March. Once we're happy with it, we will send it out to the faculty again for input and to the dean's council. And basically, what it is, is it's different areas that we think need to be worked on in terms of the academic side of the house. I can give you some examples if you like.
Yeah, just a quick, one or two quick examples.
Well, it's been a number of years since we have reviewed, for example, the general education courses, content of Gen Eds. We need to go back and review that. And in the process of reviewing the Gen Eds, we need to make sure that they are in compliance with Kansas Board of Regents Core Outcomes courses. So, that's one. Another thing that we would like to look at is our degree programs. We have a lot of degree programs that specify specific courses. For instance, they might say, instead of six hours of a humanities course, they will specify specific courses in humanities. We need to look at those and see whether or not, do we really need those six, or can it be any six? Because we want to try and minimize the number of deviations that are coming through. Some of the academic areas have requested certain things in terms of facilities upgrades to help with student success. Basically, the plan is in three parts: in pursuit of academic excellence, in pursuit of student success, and then technology and facilities that will support academic excellence and student success.
Very good.
And hopefully, once we go through the process, I'll present it to Dr. Givens, and hope I'm targeting before sometime, maybe middle of May, to have it all ready for Dr. Givens.
Will the plan also address needed professional development, or how professional development is delivered in the college, or is that outside your --
I don't think there was anything -- oh, some of the things that we're doing, for instance, the early alert system will involve professional development training for faculty. The tracking system that we're looking into will also involve staff and faculty development on these things, yeah.
Will there be anything in the plan regarding teaching and quality teaching?
Pedagogy?
Yeah, pedagogy.
Yes, yes, there will be.
Thank you.
And one of the other things we're looking at is some of our programs that are experiencing low enrollment. How are we going to address some of those issues? And that will include pedagogy as well.
Great. Thank you.
And assessment is a big role in this as well.
Thanks.
I did talk with Vice President, as we are going to begin our budget discussions in March, but the education master plan not going to even be available till May. And of course, June is when we, again, there's going to be a little timeline conflict. I don't know that it can be resolved, because I actually very much appreciate the process of inclusion, which is something that Dr. Givens is, you know, really institutionalized here, and I think the board has been very supportive of this. And so, I just though want to make sure that the rest of the trustees understand that some of our decisions, you know, may not be able to be fully vested yet, you know, into the plan itself. And of course, then we have a transition about to take place, a new vice president who may have a little different viewpoint from our current VP. No disrespect.
No, I know.
You know, but I'm just -- so, those kind of things, we need to be very cognizant of as we are planning our budget and seeing how we can move forward. But of course, modernization of our curriculum, as well as being able to accommodate it, both in regards to technology and facilities, I think is very important. And so, I, again, hope that the audience is listening, because anytime you speak about those things, then there is a dollar associated with that. And so, we were, you know, the finance committee is going to be as prudent as it can be in making its recommendations to the full board, but I just want to make sure that everybody is truly hearing what is being stated, so that no one says that they're being blindsided or surprised than when our budget talks commence. I also wanted to commend the grant team, because from my reading, you have actually been ahead of deadlines.
Yes.
Not just meeting them, and I think that is excellent. That is exactly the standard that I think we're wanting to have here at the institution. And so, I commend you and the entire team for addressing that for the board. And I did on your last, you attended the Kansas Council of Instructional Administrators.
Right.
Could you give us an update?
Yes. That was last week. Basically, there were a couple of major topics with that one. The first one is the performance agreement. That has undergone revision, and we thought that the Kansas Board of Regents had settled it, but it was my understanding, they've revised it a little bit again. They still haven't given us the final word, but once they do, the, we're going to have to prepare a new performance agreement for July 1, for the 20, not 2013, 2014, 2015 years. And also, we have a report, an update on our current performance agreement, which I think is in March, middle of March sometime. We have to work on that. The other thing that we talked about was the articulation and transfer with the different universities. There is now a matrix on the Kansas Board of Regents website, which lists the courses that have gone through the articulation and transfer, and the different institutions may name the same course a different way, and Kansas Board of Regents has established like a, kind of a generic name. So you can actually go to the matrix and see what courses are being transferred and how their equivalency. So we talked about that. We had an update from Linda Fund, and it was a long meeting, but very productive, so.
I'm of approval of the Vice President's report.
Second. All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you very much.
Item 10, we'll now hear from Vice President Bodie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Bill Miller, and you, I think you know Bill Schmidt from Novak Burke Accounting Firm. And Bill's going to, the Bills, both of them.
Bill squared.
Bill squared. Will walk you through the audit for 2012. It's already been presented to the finance committee.
Thank you, Brian. Again, for the record, my name is Bill Miller. I live at 4717 North 130th in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm also a graduate of this school, so I'm really, really happy to be here today. First and foremost, I think everybody received a packet before the weekend. We felt strongly this year that we get the information out. There's an executive summary, along with an audit report, on a financial statement audit, a compliance audit, and then some other required communications. We did go through in detail with each one of the Eastern reports on the audit, the finance and audit committee with trustee Rios and trustee Townsend a week ago. So, we do want to go, kind of go through these. I've developed a little bit of a PowerPoint that you're going to see on your screen. And of course, I want to begin with thanking you. Our serve, our firm serves audit clients in both Kansas and Missouri, and we're really happy because we're able to be involved in this audit this year. We had a number of staff assigned to this engagement, including Bill Schmidt, who I know many of you are familiar with. Also, Joe Glaboki, Cindy England, and Jason Hendricks were also a part of the engagement. We are members of the AICPA, and we're licensed in both Kansas and Missouri. For purposes of today, in the three reports, the two reports actually, the two audit reports that you received, there's really three things that we strive to kind of understand at its core. And the first one is, are the basic financial statements free of material misstatement? And that's really our objective. These are your financial statements. They're not our financial statements. They're yours. And we go through them to determine, do we believe they are materially correct? The second is, and this is really important, particularly for governmental entities, are the internal controls adequately designed and effectively operating? And that's important, because a lot of times, as we go through the process of running an institution this size, with literally thousands of controls that occur every day, particularly in the classroom environment and some of the other environments related to grant programs and so forth, it's important to look at them and say, not only are they designed effectively, but are they operating effectively? And that's what we attempt to do on certain controls as we go through our engagement. And did the college comply in material respects with laws and governing, finance-related laws? Now, you know, we don't audit the educational process, and we don't audit some of the things that occur, that's handled by other regulatory agencies, but from a finance-related perspective, that's our objective. Okay? The scope of our audit, we really issue two separate reports. One's a financial statement audit. It's really sort of the public document, if you will, for the school that's published annually. And the second is a compliance audit. And the compliance audit speaks to a couple of items: internal controls over financial reporting, and secondly, the schedule of federal expenditures and major programs that we test throughout the audit. We conduct our audit based on generally accepted auditing standards. You're also subject to governmental auditing standards, which is commonly referred to as the Yellow Book and the KMEC. Okay? I think it's important, because if everybody's not asleep by now, they probably will be shortly. I mean, this is, this is a different vocabulary perhaps than you're used to, to hearing. I heard it earlier in somebody's presentation earlier, but it's a vocabulary that we really need to understand and remind ourselves that we have some responsibilities about, and so that's the reason that we're going through them. We have some things that we really are required to communicate to you. Okay? And the first is this: we were not aware of any illegal acts that came to our attention as a result of our procedures.
Could you repeat that?
We're not aware of any illegal acts that came to our attention during our audit procedures.
Thank you.
And that's really important. The second one is that changes in significant accounting policies. And we have one this year, and we really want to take a moment and kind of talk to you about it. And that is a change from last year's audit report that was issued. Fund 26, which is commonly referred to as the Student Financial Aid Fund, includes direct grants that are subsidized and unsubsidized, and plus loans. Are really, the college's role is more of an agency or a fiduciary responsibility. And there was some change in the, there's some change in the accounting procedures relating to that fund in 2010, and so some people kind of came out with some clarification. And as a result of that, early on in the engagement, Brian and staff, Marie and others recognized that really those are agency funds, they should not be included in revenue and expenditures. The report that was prepared for this year does not include Fund 26 in revenues and expenditures. So I think you get a good comparative view of this year and last year, but it's important to note, that's a change in, in the accounting policy for the, for the college. We had absolutely no disagreements or difficulties in dealing with management. I would further say, we felt like we had full and open access to the books and records of the college. We got particularly, I felt like, strong response from Student Financial Aid and the Perkins Grant that was through the tech center. You can kind of sense as an audit auditor, when you go into an engagement, you know, how quickly information is provided and the manner in which they provide it to you. So, I felt like that was really a very public and very positive step in terms of our engagement.
So you would say that you had full cooperation from management in regards to your auditing responsibility?
Yeah, I absolutely would say that. And I mean, it goes beyond that. I mean, we work in a lot of audit engagements, and most generally, people are very open and honest, but I think particularly because we, I was relatively new to this institution in terms of an audit role, we probably asked a lot more questions in a lot more areas, and everybody was cooperative.
So, would you describe the exercise as the college being transparent in its operations?
I would describe the college being transparent in relationship to our audit.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't speak to areas outside of our audit.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those questions. So, we've got a few financial, there's, the first one we're going to talk about is the financial report, which you've all received. And I apologize, I don't have copies for folks in attendance, but I would note that that will be on the college's website as soon as they authorize. I mean, we'll provide it to staff, and they'll put it up there.
Right after the Board of Trustees approves it.
Right, exactly. So the financial report and the financial, the report and the financial statements that you've received today, I'm going to go, not briefly through these, you've had some time, so you may have some questions, but essentially, the report has management discussion and analysis. Those comments, that information was provided by management, and that's important to note. It's their opportunity in auditing and accounting standards to really state how they believe things are going without having to overly comply with regulatory requirements and other things of that nature. Okay? So any questions relating to that? They're really part of management's comments and discussion. I would take you to our audit opinion, which I believe is on page seven. There's a few things that I'd like to call attention to there. There's three books.
Report and financial statements.
I'm sorry. Yes. Page seven in the larger volume, or bound copy. The first is that included in the engagement, included in the audit, and in the financial reports as published by the college, includes the KCK Endowment Association. Those are embedded into this document. We didn't audit those papers, and so we clearly state in there that we didn't audit those. Those were audited by other auditors. Secondly, we, in addition, we didn't audit the MDNA, and we didn't really audit the supplemental schedules that are in the back end of the audit engagement. This is an unqualified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can get from an audit standard perspective. And so, I think that's important to note. We did list that, you know, we tried to be pretty communicative about the audit opinion, the information that's in it as it relates to it. And now I'm going to go to page nine, if there are no questions on the audit opinion. I'd like to just take a moment and talk about the combined statement of net assets. It's really the balance sheet, for those of you who are familiar with accounting information. What's important to note here is that it's in a different format than you may be used to seeing it, and that's really important to kind of begin the conversation. The college operates in a series of funds, and those funds are involved with your data tell system that track the ongoing day-to-day activity. And that, those, I felt like, and I think Bill felt like, as we went through our engagement, we have a great deal of comfort with those systems and those controls as it relates to the data tell system and the underlying funds that operate for the college. What you have before you is kind of a combination of all of those funds, an aggregate look at the financial statements. And while it may be a bit different than you're used to looking, this is the standard format as prescribed for an education institution such as yours. And I think it's important that we're working with Brian and others to try and speed up and facilitate that process and the generation of this document, so that you can receive this on a more timely basis and perhaps even on an interim basis. In terms of the numbers themselves, I mean, you're here often, and you, you have a good feel for the issues and the opportunities facing the, the college. I won't speak to those, but I would speak to just kind of the macro themes that we see. There's a lot of construction going on at the college. There's really a tremendous build-out that's occurring. And these financial statements reflect that, and, and I think that is kind of the fundamental driver of the shift in how net, net assets are, are held for the college. Essentially, last year, there were a lot of funds available through the certificates of participation. Those are really being drawn down and used in these construction progress, projects. And I would just say, that's kind of the underlying theme of this balance sheet, as you look at it year over year. Okay? As we go to the page 11, I won't speak to the Endowment Association on page 10, but as we go to page 11, you'll, you'll see the combined statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net assets. And once again, without getting into accounting speak, it's in, it's in, it is a listing of the funds aggregate together, so that we could compile a set of, an income statement that's compliant with GAAP. And as you'll note, there's operating revenues and operating expenses, which are very much in line with last year. You know, just in attending the meeting this morning, there was discussion about salaries being down and so forth, and benefits are being up slightly. So I think that's kind of what we expected as we went through our audit procedures, and that was reflected in the books and records of the college. And then the non-operating revenues, which basically consists of the county property taxes and other state aid that's provided. Okay? The college ended the year with net assets of $35,943, which was slightly lower than the year before, and so, that's, that's just the result of ongoing operations. Page 13 and 14 are statements of cash flow. And then, the rest of our report, hopefully you've had a chance to review it, includes the disclosures. And oftentimes, on an organization this size, the disclosures are critical. And you'll note that we worked with Brian and his staff this year in terms of providing some more information as it relates to certain disclosures. And the disclosure that I would like to go to first is disclosure C. And disclosure C is essentially capital assets for the college for the year ending June 30th, 2012.
What page is that?
Page 19.
Page 19, I'm sorry. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
We talked about the presentation of the prior year's capital asset listing, and we felt like works in progress or construction in progress, however you wish to view that, needed to really have some additional information provided. You'll note that we now are displaying capital assets which are not subject to depreciation. That includes construction in progress, is separated from capital assets being depreciated. So at the, at June 30th, 2012, there's, there are $9 million, $9.3 million in funds involved in capital, or construction in progress funds. And that's a significant number, and we think that that provides the reader a good glimpse of how you're doing in terms of capital assets and the presentation of capital assets. I would now take you to page 23. I'm going to stop here for a second. We had good discussion, I'm sorry, page 23. We had really good discussion, I felt like, at the finance and audit committee as it relates to the defined benefit pension plan, which is currently operated by CAPERS. There are accounting standards out there which could impact the way the college is and currently reports the pension funds, in which CAPERS really has responsibility. It's not unique to the college, but it could impact you in years 2015. I only bring that to your attention because I think it's important that we continue to provide you an update in that information as we go forward, so that you have, you understand what's being asked of you, why it's being asked of you, and what impact it's going to have potentially on you.
And I think the bottom line to that is if the state can't, somewhere down the line, the accounting principals are going to say, the state of Kansas cannot fund their CAPERS program. We are responsible to our employees. That will put a significantly increased liability on us for the reporting liability, at least for retirement accounts.
That's well said. That's exactly what we're, we want to stay on the front end of that from an informational perspective to the Board of Trustees. Next is note I, other post-employment benefits. We spent some time working with Marie, and Brian, and Bill on our team. In terms of drafting this footnote, to kind of further clarify the other post-employment benefits that are offered through the college, I would note that in our subsequent event notes, we extend that through 2015, I believe that year is. And then lastly is note J on page 25, and that speaks to the student loan discussion that we had earlier regarding Fund 26. This actually lists the amount of funds that are, are out on direct, direct subsidized and unsubsidized and plus loans that did not flow through the financial statements of the college. They, they flow through Fund 26 as an agency fund, but under GAAP, they're not recorded as revenue expenditures, because honestly, theirs are considered the students' monies and not really the college's. Okay?
We're just a pass-through.
That's right. And note K is a note that you've not seen, and I've included it. Again, these are new accounting pronouncements that could and very well may impact the college as it moves forward. We've tried to put them in the context of what they could mean to you and how they could impact you. Some of them are waiting, pending additional information, but I think it's safe to say that more and more accounting changes and auditing standards are going to shift here in the coming years. Okay?
Bill?
Yes?
Can I ask you about number 61, because it seems to talk about assessing the accountability of elected officials? Let's, let's, I tried to read it, but I don't understand the language, so what's that referred to?
I'll make that one very clear, because it's actually quite pertinent in this case. Our standards want you to take more and more responsibility for these documents. And one of the pushbacks from people has been discreetly presented component units. Let's think of them as the Endowment Association. They've always, under standards, clearly been placed in your report. What people have said in the AICPA discussion groups is, well, wait a minute, as a board, I'm not comfortable taking, issuing that report. We don't have day-to-day operational control. That standard shifted, is in the process of shifting through GASB 61. So, Doctor, what that means is that, and we talked about it at the finance and audit committee, it needs to be relooked at, as whether or not those are incorporated into your document going forward. In the past, you didn't have a lot of options. Now, at least there's a point where you can have a discussion about that.
Thank you.
Did that answer that question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
Do we have some options?
Yes. Actually, you will have options as this standard comes into place. Okay? Thank you. Very good questions. And then, of course, the one we're talking about earlier is GASB 68, where it discusses accounting for financial reporting and pensions on them, on page 26. Okay? That is the, the report and financial statements component of our presentation. I would note that it's an unqualified opinion. There are no material weaknesses in internal control. We discussed with the audit team what we consider to be some areas of improvement and deficiencies in internal control as it relates to financial reporting. I noted in the board packet that I read today, there's some discussion about increased systems as it relates to generation of financial reports. And, you know, my role isn't to really dictate policy, that's your role, but I would like to see us get to the point where we can produce more timely financial information in aggregate, so that better decision, well, not better decisions, but more information is available to make decisions from. And that's the objective there. Okay? Any other questions on this report before I go to the compliance report? Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, if I think, I think I got one, but I want to wait until you get through it.
Sure.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Because I'll wait till you get through.
All right. The second report is really the compliance report. And it's really important because, as auditors, we like to talk about it. Doesn't that make it important? So, I don't know. But essentially, there is an independent auditor's report on internal control of a financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on audit of financial statements performed in accordance with governmental auditing standards. All that really means is that we have an obligation to look at internal controls, but we don't tell you we look at every one of them. As I mentioned, there are thousands of internal controls throughout this institution. But the one we're really charged with looking at is the generation of financial statements and the financial reporting that's made available to the public, made available to the board, the transparency factor as we talked about. Again, the college's ability to generate financial statements is strong in the area of fund accounting, in the area which Datatel really tracks tuition, expenditures, processing of payroll. All of those things are strong. The area that we are concerned about and we would like to work towards improving is financial reporting in aggregate. This total presentation that kind of gives you this snapshot of the whole college as a whole. Okay? We've also issued an independent auditor's report on compliance with requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each major program. What that essentially is, what was formerly called the single audit, those are, we are required to select various grant programs which are funded at a federal basis. We are charged with running compliance-related activities associated with 14 criteria to determine if those grants are compliant as requested by the federal government. We've issued an opinion in that, to that case, that we believe they are, and the two we've tested. And we did the student financial aid cluster and also the vocational grant, which is also called the Perkins Grant as well. So again, we found no, in terms of the federal award, internal control of a major programs, no material weakness and no reportable conditions because federal grant reporting doesn't require the GAAP-based aggregate report that you might see in the other financial statement that we just reviewed. And there were no audit findings as a result of that. I know this is a lot of information, and I know that you've all had a chance to look at it, hopefully, and I'll be happy to stand for any questions as it relates to it. We've also provided a required communications letter, which kind of spoke to some other items that we identified. And as importantly, you know, this year, I think, we sent out an executive summary along with these, so it might give you an idea of what you're looking at. We're here to serve you. We want to do a good job for you. And so, we've given you the benefit of the items that we noted that were drawn to our attention.
I might just add one other thing. The last page in the White House for schedule, regarding to the project, and we're going
If there are no questions, I would ask for the board's approval of the 2012 audit.
So moved with a commendation to Brian and his team for the good work they did on the audit and for the financial responsibilities they undertake.
Second, second.
All right? Spin motion by Dr. Daniels and seconded by Trustee Townsend. Any question or comment by other board members? All right?
We can ask no question about the endowment at all to them.
They did not audit.
Yeah, they did not audit.
It's not their responsibility to do so.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Kerry.
Bill, I really appreciated both bills being present for the Audit Committee meeting. Very thorough, and I like that you put it in language that we can understand, because you kind of have your own little language to some things, but I really did appreciate you simplifying as well as being very thorough and making sure that we understood exactly how we could assist Brian and his team in ensuring future positive audits. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to thank Novat Berks. This was as good an audit as we've been through, detailed. There was some, there was some news we didn't want to hear. They delivered it with as soft or of a dagger as they could provide to us, and I appreciate that. They listened to our comments back to them. It was a great audit. We've always had good audits with Phil. This one, because of changing in audit standards, it's getting a little tougher. And I appreciate somebody saying my name, that I had something to do with this, way back in the very bowels, I might. However, Marie Branstadter and her staff in the business office and Dr. Denise McDowell and Director Mary Dorr in our financial aid department, they are the heart and soul of what make this report good. I ask that their contributions be the ones that are important, and I just try to stay out of their way on most days.
Okay, Brian, thank you. So noted, and congratulations and kudos to all staff members for the assistance. Bill, thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I included my report for this month. I guess to highlight is if, in fact, all the weathermen are wrong and we don't get a major storm Wednesday night through Thursday, I don't know how grand opening of the baseball field Saturday is really gonna, please watch. We will get ahold of you if anything changes. It is scheduled, supposed to be 25 degrees. If I was a gambler, I wouldn't put a lot of money on it, but please stand by. It is at 1:00 on Saturday. Also important, between the women's and the men's basketball game Saturday night, will be the induction ceremony for the Athletic Hall of Fame, and we please invite all of you to come to that if you possibly can. And I'll answer any other reports, comments, questions.
I have a few questions, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In regards to the athletic report, it says there were a number of community events occurring, and that kind of statement has been mentioned in the past. Could you provide more details as to what those community events are in the current month and then in the future? Those reports have a little more specificity to them.
Okay.
Specificity to them? That would be great.
We'll put more details in it, yes.
Okay. Then in the business office, it said about 350 students were dropped for non-payment. Is that up or down from previous?
That's about average.
About average? Okay. Does that, I mean, does that seem, it seemed like a high number, but is that?
Out of 7,000, it's less than a half a percent.
Would that?
It's, you know, it varies. We asked students to start registering for this spring semester on the 1st of November. They started registering online or coming through the advising center and/or admissions office. They started going to their academic counselors to enroll starting November 1st. They had two months and 10 or 11 days, I can't remember exactly what the cutoff date for non-payment was. If they have financial aid, if they have an exterior scholarship coming from somewhere outside of the building, any other, if they have set up a payment plan, if they're doing it on their own, any of those things qualify. These were 350 people who signed up for classes and either decided not to go to school, decided they were gonna go somewhere else, and/or that we just babysit them again and let them go and then work with them afterwards. And we had put out all the notices at this time. Academic deans and Tamara, at the last minute are adjusting classes, adding classes, closing classes during enrollment. And they have 350 people occupying, if they only take 10 hours, that's 3,500 credit hours, that they think are going to be full, and so they open a new class, and then those people don't show. It's, you know, it's part of that thing, and they work long hours trying to figure out how many hours, how many classes to add, how many to take away. We took these people out of that equation so that we didn't have all of those saying we needed to open a new course when we had people that weren't gonna show.
Mr. Vody, do you have the numbers for those that re-enrolled of those that were dropped?
No, ma'am.
Fifty percent?
Half.
Fifty percent re-enrolled?
And what happens to them when that happens is they came in in November and they got really the class at the time, at the date that they wanted to have, and it was really great because they were in early. We dropped them, then they re-enrolled, and maybe not, didn't get the same class, they got, because that class was full. But these are students who knew for two and a half months that they had to make some arrangement to pay for it. So, 175 of them probably have a worse schedule than they thought they were going to have if half of them re-came back in.
All right. Under the Information Services, I didn't understand the recognition, so I wanted to give you a airtime to say what that accommodation was. Recognized one of the top 10 social CIOs?
Chief Information Officers. Baz is.
It was in the article.
Baz has been.
So what?
It was in the article?
Something about on Twitter, I don't know.
Well, first of all, good morning. And thank you, Trustee JD, for the recognition. A CIO is a Chief Information Officer. It is the title for the highest official for technology on campus or any organization. And I am privileged to have been selected as the, one of the 70 highest social CIOs globally. It was a list that encompassed many CIOs from NASA, British Telecom, and British Airways, and it is a global listing of CIOs. It is basically, Twitter is a social network where professionals working in this industry share ideas, discuss technology trends, and so on and so forth.
All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
While you're there, Baz, on the report, also talking about the board portal, want the trustees to note that we're due to make a final decision on this no later than March. And there were some that were going to follow up for some additional information and possible tutorial. How's that working out?
I believe that we agreed that board members will coordinate with Peggy to set up perhaps an orientation session where we have hands-on on iPads and also have that portal available as a demo. So, up until this moment, I don't believe that.
I get it. And thank you very much. You handled very delicately.
Spoken like an award.
Thank you so much.
I'll, once again, strongly encourage my colleagues, if you're, if you need that, the clock is ticking here, and we're getting closer to March by the minute, so procrastination may work for you, but it may not necessarily work for folks around here.
If I may add. If I may add, we will work around your schedule, so please just let Peggy when you will be available, and we will make sure that we have an arrangement for it.
Let me know I can get warrants, we can round them up. We get it done one way or another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Enrollment Management Division, we normally get a report, maybe I'm dreaming this, about our enrollment, about the makeup of students, age, gender, race, degree, interests. Is that, will we, we'll be looking forward to that report?
Not, it'd be something that comes out of a Sondheim's area, but we can, in fact, do that if you're looking for it.
Sure.
That comes from the research area out of the database, but we can do that report, yes?
Okay.
Report on enrollment, we are 4% down this semester on head count and on credit hours. But I would caution you, I think we were the last of the community colleges to start to lose enrollment. When I met with all the business officers last semester, every other community college had started this downward trend that seems to be hitting us right now. And we stayed flat during fall. And so, we are, I hope, a semester behind the decline, which is good news for us.
Thank you. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, I have a couple of questions. The Track and Field Festival, is it still gonna be in existence from the 6th? A couple of parents that had high school students approached me last night and said they had, we had canceled it. I wasn't aware of it, and so.
Coach Hobson was in to see me early this morning. Yes, last week, we talked to Coach Hobson about perhaps having to cancel on the Saturday. We have a volleyball, we have 22 volleyball teams in the fieldhouse that day. We have a home baseball game up there that day. We have motorcycle training that starts for the spring that takes away the entire parking lot up in the overflow parking area. And we have regular classes that day. And so, Coach Hobson was in there this morning to talk to me before the meeting. I gave him two minutes to give me his ear. I'll work with the athletic director sometime later today, but I don't know if we have the capability to park the people to come to these events that day. I don't know where we're gonna put them.
Okay, so a couple of things maybe we can do, if I can suggest. One is that the motorcycle, can we move them for one day over into the area where the, what's?
Credit union?
Credit union is.
Well, they have a, they have a specific course that they must drive that's approved by the state. I think if we move them, we have to bring the state of Kansas in and get approval for moving them that, to that course. I remember when we took it down to Tech 1 for a while last year, the state of Kansas had to come in to approve that the course that they drive is, in fact, available. We haven't repainted that, and I haven't looked at it. I can, I guess we can surely check into that, but it is not just as simple as telling them to move their 12 motorcycles over there that day. There is a specifically designed and painted course on that, in fact, there's two of them out there on that parking area, and they have to drive that course, but I can check into that, yes?
Okay. The second thing is, were you aware that the high schools had changed their date to come to participate in this? Because they had already had that set up and changed it.
He told me that this morning, yes, ma'am.
Okay. You know, okay, at the baseball, at the softball games, who are we playing that day?
I don't know. It's a regular schedule.
Coffeeville.
Coffeeville. And you think that's gonna be full of cars?
No. No, I don't think Coffeeville bring very many people to the baseball game.
That's too far on the other end.
I don't think, but I think that if you're anticipating 1,500 people to be at the track meet that day, you're looking at 500 or 600 cars. I think the volleyball tournament starts at 06:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning. They will, the volleyball tournament will fill the parking lot at the fieldhouse. Where are those 500 cars going to park?
Okay, well, it didn't just happen, so we need to work out something because I just really feel, we say we try to build between school district 500 to get their students involved so they'll come here to college. And every time, it looks like something comes up huge, we don't want to do it. So, I know this planning process started a long time ago. I'm like, when, what's his name was here, the athletic director, didn't he know that the scheduling, there was two, three things going on at the same time?
Ma'am, I don't know what he knew. I found out. I, I found out about, the day I found out about the track meet, we looked at the schedule and found the other events that were on it.
I hope he could look at this.
I'm not going to talk about how long it's been being worked on or coordinated, because I don't know that.
Okay. I hope we look at this, because KPRS had been contacted, I know Channel 5 had been contacted, and Channel 5 was there last night, but I wasn't aware that they had even tried to cancel it. It's an opportunity.
Well, the Friday day is not under in jeopardy.
Good opportunity, if we can bring 1,500 students in here to see this campus that are middle school and high school, it's a, it's an excellent opportunity. And we need to take a look at it, please.
Yes ma'am.
A serious look at it.
What's a track meet?
It's a track festival.
Track festival for USD 500, middle and high schools. Coordinated later than the volleyball tournament. The volleyball tournament was in the schedule first.
Okay.
And so we are trying to make accommodations.
Eight on that?
April 5th and 6th, or 6th and 7th. 5th and 6th, the 5th... And the 6th will be the track.
And it's a baseball game and a softball game, right?
Well, there's a baseball game and a softball game. There's 22 teams to be here for volleyball, and we'll be a busy campus. We'll look into what we can do.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian on this?
Well, Brian, I just had one on the spring enrollment day, they said they had a line for quite a few hours. You know, we heard that several years ago, but last couple of years it seems like we've kind of, that enrollment process has been pretty smooth. We have a reason why this year it seemed to be, or is that normal, we just haven't been reporting it or something?
No, it was longer this spring, and when we went out and walked up and down the hallways asking people, they just didn't take advantage of the two months that they, most of them were returning students who just hadn't done it. And when you ask them why, the answer was, "Because." And we kind of lost our mercy quotient for them to stand in line. We worked on them hard and got them through as quick as we can, but if they, if they decided for two months not to enroll because they wanted to stand in line and talk to their buddies, that was their decision.
It seems that was the case, by the way. If you do something different that caused that to happen, does it...
How did that line compare with the line for the new students that were enrolling?
Oh, the new student line was, was quicker and, and ready to go. And we, of course, we had fewer at spring than we do in the fall, but no, it was...
Rick, will you approve Vice President's report?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion down this end, anyway. We have a motion in a second to accept the Vice President Bodie's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Brian. And Finance?
I ask for your approval under 11A for the payment of the bill.
Finance Committee reviewed and recommends approval. Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Good.
And I ask for your approval under 11B, the financial reports as presented.
Financial report, again, was reviewed by Finance Committee, expenditures from the month of January are just a little over 2.6, which is the million, which is the average, so it's in line with other months. As you would note on your cumulative report, we should be at about 42% projected, and we are at 46, so that's very good. The two line items, facilities report, institutional support, are a little down, but again, remember the timing, paying bills on our projects has a lot to do with that. So, then for the year, just so that you know, again, our kilowatt hours down cumulatively at $9.1. Now, we, the expense was up, but so was the cents per kilowatt hour, is rather significantly up from past, but I would contend that we are still saving dollars through our green efforts with our electricity usage.
Most certainly. Okay.
Approval of financial report?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
And I ask for your approval under 11C, recommendations 1 through 8, 7, 8, 8 are on your amended agenda.
Finance Committee did review, well, 1 through 6. We did just receive recommendations 7 and 8. Well, note 8 is the low bid. On the one bid that was kind of the middle bid, I do, I think it's very important to note that that was the only bid that also included installation of the equipment along with training for its usage, which we felt more than justified, the little, about 7,000.
I just want to clarify, though, that that installation, calibration, demonstration, training, that wasn't a part of the...
They offered it up.
They offered it up. I agree with JD's assessment.
Yeah, so, they want you to know, and then on item 6...
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold it. Did the other companies have an opportunity to make that same announcement?
Yes, sir. We bid equipment. We bid equipment. They brought equipment bids, this company, and all of them were free to do what they wanted. They brought this as an add-on to what they would have...
I just want to be sure that, that everybody had the same opportunity, and I'm fine.
And Praxair has a long history of working with us.
Yes, thank you, no, I appreciate the clarification, but yes, that was, that was a question asked. And then on 6, they did want you to know, they did try to shop this locally to see about getting the washer.
What is it? 60-pound washer, right?
It is the biggest washing machine I've ever seen. And it is hardwired into the wall, and one of the reasons that we went and this guy bid, this is who the vendor working on the baseball complex talked, told us about, we went, David Root went to all of our locals to see if they had one of this size, and they don't even carry them.
For uniforms, right?
It's for uniforms and...
Do we have the same, I assume we have the same kind of setup for basketball and...
No, we have two, we have two small, in fact, they're not even commercial. We have two home models that we wear out just about every year. We wear them out, wash them, and the idea is to go to one that will in fact last while we look to upgrade the other ones, so.
Yes. So, recommend approval of the Finance Item 6.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, just want to make a, on, for the Finance Committee, one of the things always happens this time of year is about tax dollars. And so, just, just keeping track, I want you to know that I, I save my real estate tax statement that the Unified Government always publishes, so I have a whole stack of them that I, but just to, want to point out for the last three years, the community college was at 26 million, so we're not talking mils, we're talking about actual dollars. It was at 26,367, three years ago. We are currently at 26,345. So in three years, we've actually declined, not a lot, but it's still a decline, $22,000. As just for comparisons, the county and city, because it is a unified government, in these three years has raised 7.1 million more dollars in the three years. So when they start talking about percentages of school districts, they usually plump school districts and the community college together, and say how, you know, we'd look at them, and that's why your property taxes are, are up. The fact of the matter is, I think, as the Finance Committee has been, as Board of Trustees has continually looked at our finances, and you, and we're building a, basically, new technical education center, our facilities upgrades, our conservation efforts, all cost money. And for us to have the same amount of money from three years ago in accomplishing this, I think speaks very highly to the administration and to this board in being able to accomplish these things that are meaningful for the economy of the community, and certainly, I think, a positive impact for the learning of our students as we are modernizing and trying to provide 21st century educational opportunities. So, I just wanted to be able to clarify that for those who might be interested.
Thank you.
And if I could get one comment, and I'm sorry, this is a BOLO on my part, I apologize to my bookstore. Next Thursday, the CAMEX conference, which is the big clothing and books and, and supplies convention for bookstores across the country, is being held in Kansas City, and our guys are going to go down and, but we were selected, us and the University of Missouri-Kansas City, were selected as the two bookstores that that conference will be touring. And it's a real feather in the hat for John Burright and his staff that CAMEX picked our bookstore, that they're going to come to visit. We'll have a couple of tour buses that arrive next Thursday as they bring people down to tour our bookstore, and so I wanted to get some battle boys in for the bookstore staff. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Maddox?
Yeah, a question for, for Brian and JD. Looking at the audit report, the figures are different from what JD just reported on county property taxes for 2012 and 2011. And he was, I think JD said 26 million? This report, 27 million in 2011.
26, I'm just going by what the UG...
Is there something else included?
Yes, and, and one of the things that, that comes on this report, that, that is how much we ask for per year.
Okay.
Okay, what we, what we get that year has nothing to do with what we ask. I mean, it's pretty close.
Okay, so...
But if we have a higher delinquent tax rate that year, we'll get less. If they recover some delinquent taxes the next year, we'll get some more. And those numbers from what we asked for on the tax statement there and the actual accounting report, they'll be in the zip code, but that's about as close as they're going to be.
Okay, well, that's good information to have, because I was wondering why there was a difference. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brian. Let's go to item 12, Committee Reports. Who would like to start off?
You start off, and I'll finish up.
Okay, I'll start off, you finish up.
Yes.
Well, Dr. Givens already reported on the KACT meeting, and Board members, just note at your place this morning, a really comprehensive packet of your information there. Neither Mary Ann and I were able to attend that. As we were attending the National Legislative Summit in Washington DC, I have this, and so we were in Washington DC last week. We had scheduled meetings with Senators Roberts, and Moran, and Congressman Yoder at various points, including the reception. We personally spoke with Senator Moran and Congressman Yoder. We did not speak with Senator Roberts, however, we did speak with his lead staffer, Joshua, whom we've met with before. They're fully supportive of the, both the federal legislative priorities on the green sheet that Mary Ann has handed out to you trustees, and as well as the Kansas initiatives, and they're very supportive of those positions. They gave us great insight into Washington DC and what, what's happening and going on there. There were some general session meetings. Mary Ann and I attended about three or four of those. It was good information, you know, from the national level, we heard from some national leaders, and we hear confirmation today in some of the reports given by staff of, of those issues, as I noted earlier. I would also note, Tuesday morning, while we were one of the general session meetings, I got a call from Senator Moran's office. They wanted to know if Ms. Flunder was available. And so I passed the telephone to Mary Ann, and, and the staff person there said that the Senator wished to give her his ticket to the State of the Union address Tuesday evening, so acting as her personal secretary, as well as her travel companion, they emailed us back and forth, and we set up the details. What an opportunity it was for Mary Ann to be able to go Tuesday night to the State of the Union address and sit in the gallery, not far from the First Lady's box in the gallery. And so, she was getting phone calls all the rest of the day from, she called a few of her children, and, you know, it worked its way through the entire family tree, and the great grandkids were calling by then. Her phone was dead by the, before we got to the end of the day, I think, but she had a, she had a wonderful time, a great time, what an opportunity it was, and we, we got the opportunity to see Senator Moran, and she got to personally thank him for, it was a very gracious offer. I tried to hunt up a ticket from one of the other legislators, but they were, they were all gone by then, so it was a great opportunity for Mary Ann. I also brought back pictures Dr. Givens sent out this morning, most trustees may, you may have, may not have seen it, on ACCT's facilitation of our search for new academic vice president. And they had a big table display there, and they had our college stuff prominently displayed, and our, what do you call them? Chalksies or chalks, whatever the stuff you give away. Our stuff was going like hotcakes, you know, and really going out there. I brought pictures back to verify that, you know, they're, they're actually doing that for us, and many people were visiting those tables, as, as of course ACCT assists a number of universities or colleges in various searches, but our stuff was very proudly displayed there, prominently displayed. And I think the conference was attended by around 11 or 1,200 Presidents, trustees, other staff members, and we had a pretty good contingent of the 19 Kansas Community Colleges, I believe there were eight represented.
Nine.
Nine, we had nine.
Two Presidents, one intern, and the rest were trustees.
Trustees, yes. And we had, well, the Vice President from Johnson County. Right, yeah. So, it was productive, it was productive time. We didn't, we didn't really have any downtime, and we used the time, the time wisely. Our legislators are supportive of community colleges in Kansas, and we visited personally, extending invitations for, for them to come to our campus. We want them to come to our campus, and they want to come to our campus, so we'll be working closely with them to see if we can facilitate that as we move through the spring here. And now Mary Ann's going to add.
Question on the Dream Act. The information, wow, one, I just, I have my understanding, if, if the Congress passes the federal, does, does that, for lack of better terminology, it might not be the right word, Trump, the, our current Kansas, because I understand in Kansas, you know, it's always, every year, they go through the battle whether they're going to keep it or not, but if the federal government passes the Dream Act, does that mean that that, then that's solidified, I guess?
I think the Dream Act gives in-state tuition decisions back to the individual states.
Or just gives it back to the state.
Gives it back to the state.
So then, so you need votes. So you need votes. Is that what I'm hearing still? Is that what I'm hearing still? I just want to clarify.
Mary Ann, do you have anything else to add?
The only thing is, they have a leadership of Congress for '13. It's October the 2nd to the 5th. Anybody that's interested in going, it's a call for presentation. You know, we tried once before to do a presentation when Jody Herter was on the board. We might need to look at that to see if we would like to have some of our staff make a presentation.
Where's it going to be?
Since we got some excellent staff.
Since Seattle.
And it's how to submit your proposal, is all the information is on here, and how to track your proposal, and how to, most of the time, it's the President and some of the people that work for that President, who makes it, and you always have one trustee on there, but usually, they can answer the, both of the questions. We need to look at that to see if we'd like to make a presentation at ACT, because I think, I think we do a lot, and we don't toot our own horn, because some of the colleges that we talk with and work with have, you know, but they are also elected, and, I mean, they're all, they're appointed, and they have a different thought, set mind. When they find out you run for election, they'd be like, oh, I don't know if I would do that. But it's different ways that different schools do different things, but they can come out with some results, and the entrepreneur part is really being pushed, both nationally and statewide, so I think it'd be something that we need to look at, and I brought some of them back. Also, I think the chef said, you're not going, you're not gonna go?
I haven't, I haven't determined.
Okay.
We'll take a look ahead and see.
But I think somebody from our school needs to attend. I brought back all kinds of evaluations, and schools is looking for different people like us, and I attended two and a half sessions, and so, and I went to the Hill every, every day, and I have my receipts, bro, and I need to give them to you, because I used all my money in cap fare.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Just from Finance, I am recommending, Mr. Chairman, that perhaps Finance and the Facilities Committee will need to have a joint meeting, and Finance Committee, we need to discuss Tech One, the roof reinforcement, decking replacement, storm drainage, perimeter metal studying, the auditing, audio engineering upgrades, the revamped drainage plan, lighting and landscape, and then, security equipment, are all items that we believe may go beyond our contingency fund, and so, we'll need to be making sure, you know, Facilities Committee is in sync with what all's coming on, and then, you know, talking about what we might have to bring to, before the full Board in April.
Okay.
In regards to how we'll pay for that, that we agree needs to be done.
You and Clyde and I can work with Brian, and we'll get it scheduled.
Okay.
All right? Advancement Council or anything?
No, we're just, our next meeting will be doing a little bit more planning for our community event, which will be April 25th here in Upper Jewel, 4:30 to 6:00 approximately, and this is, has two purposes. One is to revisit the Community Listening Project and those priorities, and where we stand in addressing those priorities, as well as getting interest from, more from the community to be involved in the Advancement Council. So, you know, we'll have more information on that after our meeting for the next Board meeting, getting really into more specifics.
Okay, good.
Kathy, what was that date again? I'm sorry.
April 25th in Upper Jewel, 4:30 to 6:00.
All right. Okay, it's time to move to item 13, miscellaneous, and refer you to your amendment to the agenda. And I would note that we have substituting today Teresa Masa, is that, did I say that right?
Mata.
Okay, all right. For Mr. Nguyen today, and so, we're pleased to have you with us.
Thank you.
So, I need a motion?
I have one question I need to ask. Can we have a presentation on what our, what programs we have for veterans? Do we have any outside programs for veterans, or do we just have, just the educational programs for veterans?
We have some of both, so we can get your presentation on the agenda.
Is there any way we could have a...
Excellent, it's meeting, presentation? That'd be good.
I don't care what meeting it is, but just, so, I guess I won't be so stupid when I ask the questions.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. All right. Okay. How long do we need in the executive session?
Yep, well, usually...
15 minutes?
Chairman, I move we go into executive session for 15 minutes?
Ten to 15, it's fine.
Okay. For, to discuss non-elected personnel matters, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. A motion was made by Trustee Maddox.
Second.
And seconded by Trustee Rios. Okay?
Excellent.
So, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll recess, we'll adjourn for five minutes to relocate, and then, will there be action to follow? Yeah, we're not going to prolong it. Okay, we're back, we're back into open session, and we are at now item 14, unfinished business. I think Dr. Givens has something to share with us.
I'd like to share with the Board that one of the recommendations in the audit that we, one of the responses that we gave is that, in order to perform some of the complex operational and investigative components for the college, we need to hire an internal auditor. And so, I have worked on a job description. Leota has assisted with that. Brian has not seen it, anybody else has not seen it, because the work was primarily done over the three-day weekend. I'll be sharing this with Brian, I will send it to the Board members, so that you can see the task that we intend for that person to perform, and we'll move forward this week with getting the job announcement out, as soon as we finalize the job description.
All right, sounds good.
Just a full-time, full-time job.
Full-time, full-time position. Okay?
Move we adjourn. Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned, thank you.